Call the meeting of the September 15th, 2021 Mount Clemens Board of Education to order. Call or roll please.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
A quorum has been established. Dr. McFadden is out of state and Mrs. Walker is not feeling well today. She had treatment today, so I knew those two were would be absent this evening. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, speak into the microphone. For recording purposes, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also be mindful, you may not receive a particular response to your inquiry this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My name is Michelle Zarza. I live over at 40 Smith. I am a parent of a first grader at Seminola Academy and I wanted to bring a few things to your notice. It's only been, you know, what, seven days of school? And there's been a couple of little mishaps that I just wanted to discuss so that we can nip these minor incidences in the early stages before they become problematic. The main problem is obviously the bus system. I'm sure you guys are aware, we've been having trouble with communication between the bus system and our school. Our school told us one time, the bus tells us another time, and then the bus shows up whenever they seem to feel like it, which makes my job very hard because I have to be at a certain place at a certain time for my job, and it makes it impossible to get my kid to her location in a timely fashion. The other thing is communication between the school and the parents. We got a robocall last night about the late start Wednesday, which we didn't even know was happening, except for there's a calendar on the website, which I was told to check. Most parents didn't think to check it or didn't know to check it for a late start Wednesday. And quite frankly, I'm not really sure why we're doing a late start Wednesday. It wasn't really explained to any of us. It wasn't really discussed for any of us. So I had to call off work this morning because I had to have my kid later at school than need be because of a late start Wednesday, and I didn't have time to prepare proper person to watch her and get her there. It's harder to find someone in the morning to babysit than it is in the afternoon. So it caused conflict. And then the other thing is, is the Mount Clemens Community School Facebook page. Each individual school has a Facebook page, but the community page hasn't been touched in a while. It doesn't even have an updated on who the superintendent was. I didn't even know your name. I'm sorry, Ms. Monique. I had no idea who the superintendent was according to any of the information I had gotten. So communication just between the schools and us, it's, I realize we want to save paper. We don't want to kill trees needlessly. But so social media has been really important between my school and me, but even then, we didn't get very many updates from the school to us. So I don't know if you guys have a way of handling that better, but I would like to see more interaction in that sense, if at all possible. I'm sure other parents have had similar complaints and can't be here. So I decided I would come and bring that to your notice. So thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a pleasant evening.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
If she could give her phone number to Paul, I will follow up.
Okay. Ms. Zarza, if you would give your phone number to Mr. Shepherd, the superintendent will follow up with you. The agenda is still open for citizens comments.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Nickel. I am the MCEA president. My address is 277-57-Deltin. I'm no longer using the chem lab as my address for, I have a small child at home that needs me. I just want to send a shout out to all of my members and just to let you guys know that we have been going above and beyond so far this school year to get our classrooms ready and to really welcome our families back. So we have worked tirelessly to provide, to get our classrooms ready. We as a staff will continue to provide those rich learning experiences our families are used to, okay? During good times and bad, pandemic or not, our teachers have been and continue to be dedicated to doing in what's best interest of our students. We want to welcome our families back to the district, welcome new families to the district. We have open arms. Of course, we are masked. Open arms, but with masks. And we want everyone to know that MCA members are here every day continuing to provide great instruction for our students as we have in the past and will continue to do so in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Agenda still, agenda is still open for citizens comments.
Patrick Linnebury, senior producer of the cable television station. I kind of wanted to follow up with Ms. Zarza while she was still here for anybody else in our public who, we do have a district Facebook page. You may follow us at Mount Clemens Battling Bathers. We do post every Monday. We post a weekly district calendar of all the events that are happening, including late start Wednesdays. I do know the principals do have their own personal Facebooks from time to time and their Instagrams and things like that. They will do more for the building level. But the district's Facebook page, again, it's Mount Clemens Battling Bathers. Please like it. And we do post at least once, I post every Monday morning, the district's calendar for the week, and then throughout the week, if there's other things happening, we will certainly add on to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So maybe we should get the word out that our Facebook page is the Mount Clemens Battling Bathers.
Well, we do have that assigned, so when people are dying by, just say, follow, like us on Facebook with the name. So we try to do something.
Right. But some, okay, thank you.
As one lets me know, so.
Agenda is still open for citizens comments. Seeing or hearing no additional comments, moving the agenda forward. Item 5A, excuse me, item five, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening is item 5A, approval of the minutes of the August 18th, 2021 regular meeting, the approval of the minutes on the September 9th, 2021 committee of the whole work session, approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Moved by member Monk to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Second by member Collins. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Secretary of the Board, I did read through the minutes. Everything looks in order. Also as one of the, God, I just lost my train of thought.
Finance.
Finance. Thank you, Paul. As a member of the finance committee, we did review the, all the bills and everything seemed to be in order.
Thank you for those comments. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Ms. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. Understand from the super, oh, I'm wrong, wrong, wrong. Item six, item, action item from the personnel committee, A, accept and approve the resignation of Assistant Superintendent of Business and Support Services.
So moved.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second by member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns from the motion on the floor? And I know this was vetted through the curriculum and personnel committees because it was something that we, we knew was coming from our last, most recent work session. So any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven, coming out of the business committee, direct superintendent. Is that, Madam Superintendent, that you want to table that for the time being?
I do want to table that for the taking.
It's been recommended by the superintendent that we table action item 7A, directing the superintendent to enter negotiations with Midwest Management Group, Inc. for CFO services.
We need a motion on that or?
Yes, sir.
Some more?
Do you want to send it back to committee or just tabling it?
We could send it back to, I'm having, I'm in conversations also with Lance Cruz, and so we're supposed to meet tomorrow. So I didn't want to do this.
Send it back to committee.
Yeah.
So chair would need a motion to send, correct, excuse me, action item 7A, to go back, send it back to committee.
So moved.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second by member Collins. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the motion to send back to the committee at the superintendent's recommendation? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 7B, extension of Washington school lease. Madam Superintendent?
What I am requesting the board approve today is the extending of the Washington lease till August 31st of 2022. We did review this with the finance committee. I also had a long conversation, and this was part of it, with Mike DeValt, this afternoon, earlier this day, earlier today. And it is also a priority of the ISD and the county to resolve this. We were supposed to have a meeting last Friday. It was canceled because of a dentist appointment by somebody from the county, so we will be rescheduling it soon. And we are looking at a way, they're, we are looking at the way to have this make sense for them to purchase Washington.
Cool.
So.
Guess teeth are important, right?
It is important, yes. And so we had originally asked to tell, extend it till the end of December, and it was the committee's recommendation to just make sure we do it, that we do it right, that we don't have to come back to you again. So we are just requesting that it go till August 31st. It better not. So we're extending the lease based on last year's, the same lease that we had had. So it's $10,000 a month with us responsible for the various pieces of the lease.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item 7B, the extension of the Washington lease.
So moved.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
I should have known.
Come on, y'all, on the other side over there.
Second by member Collins. Any questions, comments, discussion regarding the motion on the floor? And this was vetted thoroughly at our work session on last Thursday. So it's not a surprise to us in terms of the recommendation coming from the superintendent and the committee. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next informational items. Item eight, business committee. Under the business committee, the following reports are informational items. A, financial reports which are unavailable due to the audit. Are there any questions relative to item eight V, open purchase order listings? Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding agenda item eight C, contract listing? Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding agenda item eight D, facilities listings? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Oh, that takes us to item nine, superintendent's comments.
I thought you were going to add E on there.
Yes.
School started on September 7th, and so today, the 15th, we have been in school. This is, this is the middle of our second week. We are, we had some rocky starts in terms of transportation, and we're still working through that. Paul Shepherd has been a great point person and working with Trinity. It's, it's really good for us to have one voice and one person talking to Trinity about some of the issues. I don't know, Stephanie, do you have children on the, taking the bus? And have things been okay?
No.
Got it. Yeah. I, I agree. So it's been, it's been a mess. We are working through it. Trinity has all new employees in their management piece, so there are a lot of people that really had no idea what they were doing. And we're also short two bus drivers?
There are two less buses than?
No, it was on last year's schedule.
Yes. So we are, so we're also short in terms of the number of buses. So we've had some routes that have been combined onto another bus. So we are working through it. I am really hopeful that by tomorrow, things will be really cleaned up. We had probably more issues in terms of special education students and the getting them to and from school, I think, than general ed kids.
Yes, they're definitely given priority for sure.
Yeah, they certainly are. So I've been at all the schools. It's been really fun. I love honestly going to Seminola and getting a hug in the morning from those, the kids as they're running to get in line. So I've really, really enjoyed that piece. I've been in classrooms. And Kristi's right. The teachers really have been working hard this year. At Seminola, they're all outside waiting for the kids, you know, getting off the bus. And here at secondary, they're all ready and waiting in their classrooms. Things are looking pretty cheerful in the classrooms as well. So we're doing a great job there. Our football team is two and one, and do we have a game Friday?
No.
I didn't bring my phone. We're off Friday.
No, we're scheduled to have a game, but because of the number of injuries we have, they decided to cancel the game. So actually, it's not a cancellation. We forfeit that game.
We forfeited that game. And just so, a reminder is homecoming is October 8th. So if there's any chance that you can make that game, that would be awesome if you could be here. And that is the end of my student superintendent comments.
I just have a comment, Madam Superintendent. It's regarding what we talked about, the bus, bus issue. Did we not do some type of practice run for the new employees? Because the routes are the route. And if you had new employees, the routes didn't change. So my question are, do you know if our bus company, if they allow their, their drivers to do a practice run of the routes?
Up until Thursday of Labor Day weekend, we were still asking them for a schedule. It was delayed even further that day because they were at a hiring fair. So they still had not had their full roster and never did offer to do a dry run.
And is some of the confusion, and I don't know if we didn't know how, have the answers here, but just could, is some of the confusion attributable to the combination, the combining of routes since we're two buses down this year? That means some routes might have changed and?
Yes. They sent us basically last year's schedule if, and under the assumption that all the routes would be filled. Due to the fact that they're short two buses, they can't possibly meet those expectations. So therefore, we miscommunicated with the parents because we were under the assumption that they had a full staff up until the day of. We are still trying to get an accurate schedule. The bus drivers are trying to provide that. It's better to come from the bus drivers because they actually know when they're showing up to each stop as opposed to getting it from a manager who, in Roseville, who thinks they know when bus drivers should be at each stop. So there's still a delay in that. When parents call us, we try to get them the most accurate information possible, communicate directly with Trinity.
And the two buses down, is that because ridership numbers are down or the bus drivers' numbers are down?
Oh, no, we could fill the bus. So, yes.
It sounds like they don't have two more buses to fill the route. That's what it sound like.
Yes. Yes, there's, according to them, and there's a bus driver shortage. And yeah, if they had the drivers, we'd have two more buses.
Thank you.
I just got one comment. I mean, it's, yeah, it sounds like, from my understanding, they're down two buses. They don't have two more buses to fill the routes that we have. Because if they had two more buses, we can fill those buses on routes that we got.
Yes.
And on top of that, they down on drivers?
I, I have to assume they have the buses, but not the drivers.
Okay. All right. So from a financial, and I'm kind of coming at this from financial, I know we signed a contract with them.
Yes.
That should dramatically adjust that contract. So we need to definitely look into that and not be on the hook for the same amount of contract, but we're not getting the service. Okay.
Yeah. Paul and I pulled the contract last week, and we're going through it, and we'll be meeting with Trinity.
Yeah, when it comes to Kelly's desk, we plan to intercept it and bring it to the finance.
Okay.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Can you, are you in a position to provide us some type of update? We talked at, it was the last board meeting or the last work session about the math teacher?
Yes. We, we still don't have a math teacher. We had a sub arranged that had a math background, and she is unable to do the subbing in that classroom. So right now, we have various substitute teachers in there. And unfortunately, the children are on ingenuity. It is a, it is a rigorous curriculum. It's, it's just not with one of our teachers. We're looking for a parapro in that classroom that has some math background, and we're actually trying to reach out. We've been playing a little bit of phone tag with that. Stacey, is there anything else I could add to that?
We have two subs that have just been approved through Edges Staff, so I know Mr. Duncan's working to contact them as well.
Okay. And if that's the case, we would give them a long-term subposition because what we need is continuity in that classroom, as you all know. So we're in a little bit better shape than some districts. East Point is, was down 40 teachers at the beginning of the school year. So we are fairly lucky. We are still looking for ECSE teachers as well. And we have a lot of parapro positions open.
This is kind of frustrating for me because this would be the second or third year of running that we haven't had a high school math teacher. In the past, when we had people that qualified and certified for that position, we weren't able to hire them because of some contractual language. Once again, from my perspective, this is one of those situations, I'm not going to be liked, but so be it. It's one of those situations where adult issues are, get in the way of what's best for our students. And I'm almost at the point where I'm going to tell the superintendent, do whatever you got to do to get us a certified and qualified math teacher at the high school. And as a board member, I'll sit back and take the repercussions of what happens before, because this is not fair for our students. Off my soapbox.
It's all right.
All right, see, that takes us to informational, we're already in informational. That takes us to item 10, committee reports. Let's see, is any additional information coming from the business and finance committee?
No, no additional, no additional information.
Thank you, sir. Community Coalition, Mr. Linnebury, you're on, on board, on deck.
Our one first care representative that was working with our coalition, Ryan Revelon, has actually been promoted. He will be now overseeing the other coalition specialists throughout the district of Macomb County, so he will no longer be working with us. Ryan's been with us, I want to say, at least six or seven years. So he's, we'll now be starting our fourth representative for the coalition that are meeting next week. And before I forget, we are going to be doing our National Drug Takeback Day on October 23rd. That is part of the, that's something that the coalition hosts and make sure that we have. I don't know if we're going to be at Wilson Gym. We, we're going to try. I know the library has a lot of their things there right now. I'll get back to you on location. But typically, we do it at Wilson Gym. It'll probably be drive-through, so we probably could use that location. But we do ask that people bring their expired and unused prescription drugs, creams, oils, anything that can get in the hands of a kid or that can get into the waterways. We please ask that you bring it to us and let us get rid of it the right way. And that would be from 10:00 to 2:00 on October 23rd. Again, attentively, I'm going to say it's going to be at Wilson Gym. That's our usual location, but if there's a change, I will let you know. And do you have an education foundation report, sir?
I was going to say, since you're there, you know.
I was going to ask you, have you heard anything from the foundation?
Might as well go to deep.
I didn't get an email from you. You didn't get one from me, so.
Yeah, exactly. So we're both in the same boat.
So no?
No additional.
We skip E.
Thank, any questions, Mr. Linnebury? Thank you, sir. Curriculum personnel. Any additional comments coming from the curriculum personnel?
So we didn't meet in, in August, but we will definitely be having a meeting in September. So Stephanie is on there, Jake is on there, and so is Janine. So we will set something up. And Jake, you and both of you can't be here till 5:30 or 6:00, correct?
Right.
Okay. Yep. So that has been the first Thursday of the month. And if that works for both of you, we'll continue that? Does 5:30 work for both of you?
On Thursdays, yes, that works.
That works?
Yes.
So we'll ask Paul to set that meeting up because we will have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Whatever that Thursday, that first Thursday in October is.
Perk.
Item E, policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, our big policy packet is coming. I got a feeling it's around the corner.
I thought we just had it.
Right, right. Feel like it, right? We just got through it last month.
We got the email addressed today.
Oh, so did.
About two hours ago.
Okay, so it's coming. So we'll be scheduling policy coming up.
Thank you, sir. The legislative committee from the county, they're meeting tonight. So I opted to come to this meeting instead. I have no report unless there's something that the superintendents have been discussing that's hot up in Lansing.
No, actually, we had a superintendent meeting today over at the ISD. So it was in person, and I left at about quarter to three because I wanted to meet with you, and they hadn't gotten to that point yet. So there was a lot of discussion in terms of COVID and contact tracing and who's responsible and county issues. So that took up the bulk of our meeting.
All right. That takes us down to item 11, board comments. I'm going to start with
I do agree with the teachers getting their rooms done. I was able to kind of take a peek in and look at all the rooms, and they were, they have done an excellent job. And it seems like everyone is excited to be back in the building, the students as well as the teachers, which I'm excited about it as well. And I think we do need to continue to stay hopeful in that everything works out with the COVID. In our own building, we have had a case, so I do hope that we continue to stay safe. And as far as the buses, I think that they have been allowed to kind of do what they wanted to do for the last several years. So they have continued to do what they want to do. I think that if there's fire put up under someone over there, I do believe that they'll do better. Because from what I've heard, even myself, when you call the, when you call over there, it's like, oh, the bus already came. I'm sorry. And that's like the end of it, you know? Or you ask them for a time, it's two or three different times. And I have, I drove a couple kids here myself that that thought that the bus was coming at one time and they literally came fifteen minutes earlier or, and the kids were walking to school. So, um, I do think that there need to be a serious, concrete conversation with someone over there. And that's it for my comments.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Ms. Collins.
Um, I'm glad that the school year has started, um, and the kids can get some kind of normality back with their activities. Um, I'm hoping the transportation issue continues to work out. And I know Ms. Beals is really good at, um, informing us that these issues are there. Uh, so I appreciate that. Um, and I look forward to another update and hope that it's better than what it has been. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Collins. Mr. Reno.
I share the exact same comments, regards, concerns, happiness as my colleagues. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ma.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna see if I can, I'm not gonna be long-winded on this. Um, you know, I've been having this going.
I'm gonna preach and say that every Sunday.
Thank you for that. Um, I've been, you know, I've been thinking about this, believe it or not, ever since May. And I wanna talk about expectation. When there's a clear, concise view and direction of expectations, thus all you do is succeed. And it's called accountability. I think we at this board have set expectations for our superintendent to lead this district in the way that it should be led in order for things to improve. We signed our superintendent to a two-year contract. We have our principals that are in the district that are in their third year of being in the district. They're in their third year of the contract. We have senior staff members that's been in this district when I know I first came, when I was a parapro in the woodshop, when it was down the hall from the cafeteria. So when there's clear expectations, things need to proceed expeditiously in order for A1, for these kids to improve in, 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 uh, proficiency and also for these students to grow. That's a must. In my opinion, we are at a point, a time in this district where these next two years are the most vital years of this district in this time right now. We don't have any room for continuous bad transportation issues. We don't have any room for not having a math teacher in this building. We don't have time to have anything get in the way of making sure that every kid in this district receives the best public education possible that we can give them. And that calls for clear expectations. We get, at this, at this board, give our superintendent what we expect to see in this district at the end of the year. And there's a various, and we get various, let's use the key, I mean, the classroom term, we get various report cards. We get curriculum data, we get audit reports, we get it all. So, and my, my view of the expectations of these years that we need to make sure that all this comes together. It all comes together and we, all that rusty wheel, we fix that, whatever pipe that's over here, so that train can get on that track. And that engine, and the engine in this district is the union, our teachers. They're, they're, that's the union. They're the engine, because that's where the rubber meets the road. So if everybody from top, starting with the board, goes to the superintendent, goes to administration, gets down to the classroom, because that's what? As a parent, I expected my son and my daughter to go to school and do the best that they possibly can do every day. Behave, listen, be respectful, and they knew. If I got a call, I had to come in here and get off work and come here, it's gonna be ugly. So the expectation is that this is a team, y'all. This district is a team, but everybody needs to be together. And the thing is, is that we need to make sure that everybody in this district is held accountable. Accountability has been one of the things that's been lacking in this district. That's one of the reasons why I got on this board. Accountability, expectations. I expect, me personally, one member of seven board members, I expect that proficiency rises, growth rises in this district. And I'm not talking about one or two percent. I'm talking about growth, because we need these kids to grow. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. I'd like to say, welcome back. Here we are in 2021, 22 school year. We get a chance to do it all over again, but this time, we do it face-to-face as opposed to the other modalities that we've been forced to do over the la, uh, since, uh, last, excuse me, last March. And I received a few phone calls from my colleagues that serve on, uh, the board in Detroit, colleagues that serve on board, uh, in Oakland County and Wayne County. And they asked me, Earl, what are you guys doing in Mount Clemens? Because there was a report on the number of reported COVID cases in school districts across the country. And Mount Clemens, when we looked at the, uh, excuse me, in the state, uh, and Mount Clemens reported zero cases of COVID, uh, in our school buildings thus far. And I just simply told it that the board took a position in July and we stated that we were going back face-to-face. And if you're on our buses and if you're on our buildings, you have to, you have to have face covering on. Uh, we, that we use a protocol, uh, that where, where people enter our building, where you have to have your temperature checked. And we are, we've all bought into it, even though we really don't like it. Uh, but we bought into it to keep everybody safe. And, um, uh, that, that's potentially one of the reasons that we're able to have zero reports, because we made our decision early and, and we stuck by the decision. And that, that's the decision that, that we're moving forward with. Uh, so I, I was pleased that, I was, I was uneven aware of there was a report out there. Um, but yeah, they, they, I can't even remember the website that they showed, told me to about, but they're, they're, uh, people are watching what schools are doing. We're one of the fortunate that, you know, we have, uh, zero COVID reports at the, at the, you know, currently. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Uh, we mentioned about the football game being camp, being forfeited, um, because of the number of injured players was on, on campus today. And there are a couple of players that have, under, currently under, uh, concussion protocol. Um, a couple of players that have strained MCLs. So technically, those aren't injuries that you sit out three, four days and you're back the next week. Uh, I've, I've, I've expressed my concerns around this board table about the lack of, number of participants. And, and this is one of the reasons why, that, uh, you know, these, these, our student athletes are getting beat up and getting injured because they're on the field, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. And that's not good, uh, for any environment. And, and, and it makes the program look bad because you have to forfeit games. It makes the school district look bad because your, your football team is forfeiting games. Um, and, and so we have to come to some kind of realization or some kind of, you know, resolution that, um, we, if we're gonna continue to have a football team and we have these small numbers that we had, that we need to honestly take an effort and to look into playing seven-player football team, football. What, what I mean by seven players? There's, right now, there are currently eleven players on the field, uh, on the offense and eleven players on the defense. So to have a good practice, minimally, you have to have at least twenty-two people. I'm not even saying football players. I'm saying twenty-two people to have a good practice. Whereas with a seven-person football, you only need fourteen people to have a, a, a practice. And we, the first game that, that we had this year, I counted, they had eighteen participants. There were three or four schools last year that we played that had the same number of students, between seventeen and twenty-two kids on the sideline, on, on the team. So I'm tired of hearing this excuse that there's not enough teams in this area to have seven-player football, just because there's not been an effort made, a concerted effort made by our athletic department to pursue this. Now, if they pursue it and they say it's not out there, then that's one thing. But just to say it's not out there without pursuing it does not, that's not the case. Because, uh, remember Walker's daughter, uh, played on a seven-player football team last year and they had a full schedule. So, uh, if we're gonna continue to do this and, and do something that, that represents the athlete, student athletes and the district, well, we, we need to look at a different modality. Uh, I'm, and good luck to the team, they're two and one, now they're two and two. Hopefully, they'll be able to, um, um, you know, get everybody back and we don't have, we won't have to cancel the season. Uh, because there's a strong possibility that we might have to cancel the season if these, these, these students, these student athletes can't come back. Um, good luck to the Lady Bathers volleyball team. I'm glad to see their numbers are up because generally in the past, though, they would have just enough plus one player to participate. Now, it seems as though they have fourteen and fifteen, sixteen young ladies that have come out. So that, that program is growing and, and I'm glad, glad to see that. Um, and, and the, a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about the board and I sent emails out, uh, to board relative to that, uh, we're, there's need for us to have a work session uh, at the ISD so we can get, get the, the state of the district, where we were, where we are, and where, where we need to go. Um, we, we waited to, we postponed having it earlier, cause we decided, well, maybe that we could look at the number of students that we have after, you know, first week of school start. Matter of fact, matter of fact, do you have a, um, any, a preliminary report? And I know it's not official because the official count day is not until October, but, you know, what we have, um,
So as, yeah, yeah, we, that's what we call them, um,
No, they say, bikes in seats.
Yeah, the warm body count. Uh, so yesterday, our warm body count was seven hundred and twenty-three. Uh, those numbers don't reflect the king numbers, which are under fifteen, right? So, uh, today I have Seminole's count, which is three eighty-one, but I don't, I didn't have the high school, middle school numbers by the time this meeting started. So, um, last, on the thirteenth, we had seven hundred and eighteen students. Um, on the fourteenth, which was yesterday, we had seven twenty-three. So we'll get another count for today. Thursday and Friday, we're getting counts by teacher, by class. Uh, and we're also getting counts from the special teachers as well.
And I, I think our budget was based on eight hundred?
Eight hundred and two.
And so we, you know, we still have time, but, uh, that's why we, you know, these work sessions are beneficial, uh, to all. Um, currently, we're working with Mr. DeVall. Right now, he's looking at a Thursday or Saturday schedule, but I will, um, once he gives me some dates, I'll forward those dates to the board members so we can, um, um, look at just our calendars and, um, and, um, be able to, to make the work sessions. I believe those are my comments. Notice who's not around, cause this, this meeting will be adjourned in a couple of minutes. Those are my comments. Chaylen entertained.
So move.
Move, my, my member Monk.
Support.
My member Collins. Call, roll, please.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Reno.
Yep.
Ms. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven sixteen in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.